Dalton. Egremont. Florida. Great Barrington.
Pedro Ficano, delegate.
Malcolm Thicke, alternate.
Hancock. Hinsdale. Keith is here. Keith Harrison, delegate, is present. Lanesboro.
Leanne Yinger, delegate.
Lee.
Buck Donovan, delegate.
Lennox. Monterey. Mount Washington. New Ashford. New Marlborough. North Adams. Otis. Peru. Pittsfield. Richmond. Sandersfield. Savoy. Sheffield.
I see that Sari Hoy, she's been having trouble, I think, getting in.
Okay, yep. Stockbridge.
Christine Rasmussen, alternate.
Tearingham. Washington.
Don Gagnon, delegate.
West Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Roger Bolton, alternate.
And Corey let us know he was sorry not available today. Windsor.
Douglas McNally, delegate.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming during basketball games. The next order of business is to approve the minutes of January 18th, 2024. Can you hear a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Second, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Okay, please.
For expediency, I'm gonna run through first names. Diana from Beckett, I was still trying to connect. Peter?
Yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
Keith? Also trying to connect. Leanne?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Uh, Sari? All righty.
She's, she's writing in that she's having trouble unmuting and turning on her video.
All right.
Maybe she should try logging back in.
Yeah. Um, Christine?
Yes.
Dawn?
abstained.
And Doug?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and Roger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, everybody. The, um, the next order of business is a change in our agenda. Previously, we had an open item here for, uh, delegate and alternate, uh, comments and discussion. And it's been pointed out by, um, a commission delegate that such an open-ended agenda topic, by violates open meeting law if it allows deliberation of topics that aren't specified in a sufficient detail on the agenda. So, um, starting this month, um, uh, we've changed this item to be a discussion of anything that you might want to have considered for future agendas. By the way, if it's not brought up, if you don't bring it up, if you think about it in midweek or next month, uh, please shoot a note off to myself or to Tom if you have any suggestions for, uh, items that might be included on the agenda. So if, at this point, if any delegates and alternates have anything they would like to discuss that should be included on a future agenda, please speak there. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is comments from the public. Want to entertain comments from the public? If you have any comments, please state your name and town you're from. Okay, um, there are no comments from the public then, so, uh, uh, discussion of executive committee actions that were taken during the executive committee meetings on February 1st and March 7th of this year. The executive committee actions are outlined in the package. I don't want to go through all those one by one, but if anybody has any questions or would like any discussion of any of those items, please speak now. Okay, uh, then we'll move on to the next order of business. The BRPC, uh, appoints members as the, as kind of a county organization, the remains of a county organization. BRPC appoints members to the Berkshire County Regional Housing Authority. They have requested that we, uh, that we, um, reappoint two members to three-year terms to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, that it would be Jay Seketti and Lisa Sloan. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Second.
Thanks, Roger.
Just a note.
A motion and a second, uh, it's only discussion.
Just a note that I've mentioned several times before, we're the last person standing as far as a county-wide organization, and we should recognize that.
Yeah, this is another one of those things that kind of falls through the cracks and falls in our lap, so this is fine, but, uh, any, any other discussion or questions?
Well, when this was first brought up several years ago, it was quite a quandary for the Berkshire County Regional Housing Authority, because it was supposed to be a county appointee, and so they had to figure out, um, how to, how to get it so that we could do it, but I think they've straightened that out. So this is, we've done it a few times, a few cycles now.
It's all above board and copacetic.
Doug, I thought the sheriff was the last person standing. In this respect.
Sheriff's appointment. Well, we'll go through with it. Okay, uh, any further discussion, any questions? And we'll proceed to a roll call vote, please.
Okay, again, I'm doing first names in, uh, by town alphabetically. Diana? From Beckett? Still trying to connect. Peter?
Yes.
Pedro?
Hi.
Keith? Got your thumbs up. Leanne?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Uh, if I miss your town, we'll come back to you. Sorry?
Uh, yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Uh, Roger?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Did anybody join the meeting who I've missed? All right. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, that, uh, uh, motion passed, uh, and now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is a presentation on the discussion of the Mass Leads. Which, uh, Mass Leads is an act relative to strengthening Massachusetts economic leadership, uh, also referred to as the Economic Development Bond Bill. Uh, the last, uh, BRPC meeting, uh, we, uh, had a presentation on the, uh, Economic Development Plan, Team Massachusetts Leading Future Generations. Uh, and tonight, uh, we have Rory Hanlon with us, uh, who is the executive, um, uh, executive, from the Executive Office of Economic Development, to explain proposed legislation that would implement this plan. Uh, Mr. Hanlon, will you take the floor?
Thanks, Malcolm, and, um, and thank you, Tom, um, for the invitation to be here and be with you all. Appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate your interest, and I think there's gonna be some mutual interest here, so I have a, I have a slide deck, uh, and I'll, I'll try to go through it quickly, but Tom, Malcolm, if I'm, I'm not going fast enough, just shout and tell me to keep it moving.
No, as I mentioned in my.
A little bit ahead of time, so we're.
Yes, I mentioned in my email, Rory, we might be, might be a little early, so I'm glad you could join us earlier.
Yeah, no, it worked out, happy to be here, so I'm just, I'm gonna share my screen now.
If I might remind people that you might want to put it on speaker view, you'll see Rory a little bit better.
Yeah, and I will also make sure, uh, I can leave a copy with Tom, um, so that you guys, I'll, I'll have it as a reference to. Hope that's full screen for everyone.
Yes, looks good.
Um, so as Malcolm, uh, acknowledged, last year we did a planning process around the state, um, and that fed into this Economic Development Bill, which Governor Healy filed earlier this month. So I'm gonna run through some background and jump into some of the details, and then certainly want to leave time for discussion and, and questions and get your feedback as well. So here's just the agenda, I'll jump into the background, so as you know, you might have heard this from Ann Goby when she was on with you recently. Uh, Ann's a colleague of mine in the Executive Office of Economic Development. Last year, we did a planning process, which is required by law. Uh, we did a statewide effort where we had meetings every region of the state. Uh, we, we were out, BIC, uh, BIC was some kind of hostess in Pittsfield. Um, but we, we had nine different regional meetings, uh, we had over 1,300 residents participate in the process. We had some sector-specific deep dives with, um, organizations and businesses and other stakeholders involved in that process. And ultimately, what we landed on is, um, this framework that's displayed on the slide. I think you've all seen the plan, so I won't dwell on it too much, but the, um, the plan is sort of centered around this overall vision that we want Massachusetts to be the best place for talent and for businesses. Uh, and we have these guiding principles of equity, affordability, and competitiveness across all regions, across all humans. That's sort of centered, um, from the, from the, from Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll as imperatives that we keep in mind in everything we do. So the plan is based around three, three priority areas. The first is fundamentals, uh, the idea that we, you know, we need to make sure we're investing in supporting some of the foundational things that any successful economy needs. And, uh, we learned, even though we're just the Executive Office of Economic Development, it became pretty clear that in order for Massachusetts to be successful, um, we need to address the housing and transportation challenges. We heard that loud and clear when we were in the Berkshires, um, we heard that in every other region that we were in. Um, there's some nuances, the type of housing challenges and transportation challenges that are facing certain regions, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's the price of housing, it's the supply of housing, it's the, you know, aging housing stock. So we work very closely with the Executive Office of Housing with the communities on, on that, and, um, we were at one time merged as one secretariat, so I've spent some time on housing stuff over the years. Um, as well as transportation, obviously, is an area where the state needs to continue to invest. The second priority area, which is more back to traditional economic development for us in the fundamentals bucket, is investing in infrastructure and competitiveness. We have a number of programs, um, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with just from your planning expertise and the work you do on behalf of the, the 32 communities that you represent, but we, um, we have programs like the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. We have the Community One Stop for Growth, which is our, sort of our key initiative for delivering grants to communities across the state. So we plan to, uh, continue to invest in infrastructure and also ways where we can support our competitive areas like broadband and permitting, um, and things like that. Uh, talent, second priority area, obviously, I think the Massachusetts' success is largely due to its people. Um, we have talented people doing a wide array of things in different industries and sectors. Um, and so, core to our strategy is doing what we can to retain and attract the world's best talent across all backgrounds. The, there's two components to this priority area, the first is be the global talent magnet. I'm incredibly fortunate to have so many incredible, uh, colleges and universities across the state, um, that bring in half a million, uh, college kids and graduate students each year. Uh, so a core to that is certainly, how can we make sure that those college students stay here, um, and, and, you know, start to build a career uh, and, and plant the roots here. Um, but also, in addition to, to, uh, the college kids, we're also thinking about ways where we can, um, support pathways into the trades, into in-demand industries, uh, and, you know, it's become very evident that a college degree isn't really needed for a lot of really, um, strong jobs. Um, we've also spent some time thinking about the immigrant workforce. Uh, immigrants have been so core to Massachusetts' success over the last many decades, uh, and as we have an aging, uh, aging population and a shrinking labor, um, force overall, we need to think about ways where we can, um, create pathways for, um, for immigrants to the state. The other component here is, is, you won't see it super reflected in the bill, but tell our story. We, we've learned that, um, you know, there's a lot of great things happening in the state, across the state, and we need to do a better job telling our story. If we don't tell it, who will? So we've been thinking about ways where we can promote Massachusetts, tell our story and, and tell, um, uh, you know, shine a light on a lot of the good things that are happening here. We spend a lot of time, as my boss would say, talking about all the things that are going wrong. We sometimes forget to highlight the things that are going well, so that's part of our, our strategy here to make sure that, you know, people see the value and see, um, see all the good that's happening in Massachusetts. The last priority area here, before I flip to the next slide, is sectors. This is really about supporting the businesses that power the state's economy. So we've taught, there's, uh, called a few key sectors here that we are putting in the lengthy area where we think we're, uh, global leaders, life sciences and healthcare, um, but also advanced manufacturing and robotics. Uh, some people may not be aware, but we have a really robust robotics cluster in the state, and obviously we have a proud tradition of manufacturing that stretches across the state into the Berkshires, and we, uh, do really well in cutting-edge advanced manufacturing. How do we continue to push, um, push the lead there? AI, um, we'll talk about intellect in a little bit, but, uh, obviously, artificial intelligence has burst on the scene, it's something we need to think about. We also called out some areas where we think we can do a better job of, of catalyzing or building new leadership. There's two areas in particular, one is climate tech, um, where we think there's a tremendous opportunity for the state to lean into that. Obviously, we're doing a lot in response to climate change, but there's a lot we can do in terms of leveraging as an economic tool. Um, and then tourism and culture, uh, in the creative economy, we think that this, this, we can do, there's a lot of good things happening in that, in the creative economy and the, and tourism sectors, but we think the state can be a better partner and find ways to push those industries. It supports a lot of small businesses and, um, also brings in a lot of revenue for the state. Finally, the, uh, uh, the last, um, the third leg of this stool, if you will, is making things easier for businesses. Some of the feedback we had gotten through the planning process is like, gee, you have all these programs and it's great, but it's like, for someone who's running a small business, it's very hard to navigate state government. You have to call this person, you have to maybe email this person and wait for response. So we're thinking about ways where we can streamline that, and we're working on this, uh, portal, which we're, we're calling the Business Frontier, but basically it's a streamlined, um, portal where a business will come in, ask a few questions, we'll give them feedback and get them on their way and obviously get them, uh, the help they need so they can get back to their day job and growing and supporting their business. So that's our plan, I just wanted to call that out, because it's sort of our north star for the overall bill. And as we thought about, um, you know, how do you start to, you know, your plan is only as good as, as its execution. So we thought about what do we, what are the tools or resources we have in terms of executing the plans? We have five levers that we identified that, um, we've viewed as, you know, how do we actually make this plan a reality? So one is convening, we have the ability to bring people together, um, you know, opportunities like this, thank you again, Tom, uh, talking to people, um, like, like you all about ways where we can support the state. We have resources, we work with closely with the legislature to allocate and appropriate funds, um, and we have different economic development incentive and grant programs. We need to use those wisely and obviously make sure we are getting the taxpayer bang for, for their buck. Regulation of laws, obviously, legislature, uh, passes laws, we help administer and implement them. We also, uh, have the ability to issue regulations, that's, that, um, is, is something we need to be mindful of, it can be good and, and bad, obviously, uh, so we need to make sure we're using that the right way. A customer, obviously, the government has to buy product, it has to procure services. Uh, we want to make sure we're cognizant of, of that we are a customer in a lot of ways, and that's a, that's also a tool to support, um, businesses and support residents across the state. Finally, messaging communicate, um, uh, you know, particularly Governor Healy, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, my boss, Secretary Howe, uh, are very effective communicators, and, you know, I think using that platform to convey good and convey a vision is super important. So these are the levers we thought about, uh, as we started to set out, and obviously, funding and policy are sort of the key, um, components within the bill. So, uh, gets the, cut to the chase here, March 1st, Governor Healy, uh, filed the Mass Leads Act, as Malcolm introduced. Um, it's a $3.5 billion, um, uh, bill, 2.8 of which is capital authorization, meaning it's, uh, money that will be, um, we will be using bond, uh, this Commonwealth credit to pay for it over the next several years. It's not cash, it's, it's gonna be financed. Uh, we also have $750 million in, uh, changes to, um, tax programs, so that's changing the statutory cap on, on different things. And then we have 161 outside sections that pertain to policy. Uh, and the bill is currently pending before the Joint Committee on Economic Development, it was referred there on March 11th. So I'm gonna jump in now to the, the bill's components. So just as a reminder, sort of three priority areas, where you think about fundamentals, talent, and sectors. I'm gonna use that as sort of the guiding, uh, compass for, um, for this presentation. So the first one is fundamentals, again, investing in the fundamentals to support economic growth, like, like things like the One Stop. So this aspect of the, the bill is about $1 billion, and it supports a variety of, um, programs which you may be familiar with, I'll call out a few, Mass Works. Um, there's a $400 million reauthorization of Mass Works, it's an existing program, it's been around since 2012. It's probably one of our, it's our biggest, uh, grant program in terms of, uh, uh, economic development. We invest in infrastructure that, um, leverages private development jobs, commercial development, uh, as well as, um, as, as housing. Uh, and the, uh, program is part of the One Stop, which you may be familiar with. I also want to call it the Rural Development Fund, which we've included for 100 million. And the goal is to expand and grow that program. That program is, is, uh, designed to support rural, uh, communities around the state and things similar to how I described Mass Works, helping, uh, rural communities, uh, with local economic development initiatives. And as, hopefully you all know by now, um, supporting rural communities is a big priority for the Healy-Driscoll administration, uh, and we think that this piece of the bill is, is gonna allow us to do that much more. Um, we also have programs in here for coastal communities, as well as, um, you know, how do we revive or revitalize underutilized properties or contaminated properties like brownfields? So, uh, reauthorizing existing programs. Several of these are available through the One Stop, which, uh, as a reminder, um, the expression of interest process is ongoing right now. That application window will open in May, um, and is a, obviously, a tremendous opportunity for, you know, the 32 different communities that make up, um, make up your organization to apply for things that they need to do and achieve, and I'm sure seeking your counsel on. Um, there's a couple of policy provisions that I'll fly through quickly. The rural designation, the bill, um, formally codifies the definition of rural and, and small towns. There's 181 towns and cities that meet that definition, um, and this is putting into law to provide some long-term predictability and show the state's commitment to elevating, um, those communities across the state. Permitting, we have several, uh, we have a handful of different, uh, provisions in the bill with respect to permitting, some of which is making adjustments to how we, uh, manage permitting in our office, uh, as well as some, uh, accommodations to some of the challenges we're seeing right now in the real estate industry. Um, so I want to call it that, I know it's top of mind for a lot of builders and developers across the state. Broadband, um, we're fortunate, we have nearly $400 million in broadband, uh, federal broadband funds that we're in the process of deploying. This bill, um, doesn't touch the federal funds, obviously, but it does have a policy provision in here that would, um, allow our local housing authorities and some other governmental, uh, bodies to, um, procure services much more easily. Right now, we've learned that housing authorities have to go through several different procurements. Uh, they have to do some redesign, some for installation, and it ends up taking time and money. So we're proposing to streamline that so that can be done more quickly and therefore allow us to deploy the federal funds, uh, more, more, in, in a more expeditious manner. And I know many of you are probably super familiar with the last mile effort. Um, the federal funds are hoping to build on that and, and can be applied, um, statewide. Devens, no, not in the Berkshires, but Devens is a, a, a unique asset the state has. We're proposing to make some changes to, um, their housing and commercial caps out there with the idea of we can maybe create, uh, create a platform for future development, uh, in that part of, uh, central Massachusetts. Uh, switching to talent, um, talent, we have one provision in here, it actually doesn't pertain to my office, uh, but it supports the Mass, Massachusetts Educational Finance Agency, which does work with, um, with students and families around, um, uh, support with tuition. Um, I will call out that, in addition to this bill, we have a pending budget proposal with the legislature, uh, and there's some, there's some resources in there to support a talent strategy in that vehicle as well. I won't talk about that tonight, but, uh, I just want to call that we, we do have a couple of different legislative vehicles floating around. Tonight, I'm just speaking about the Economic Development Bill. One of our proposals in here is a new, uh, statewide internship, uh, pilot program. Uh, we have different, uh, internship programs that we run currently through some of our quasi's. Uh, we have quasi-public agencies that specialize in economic development, you may be familiar with some of them. Massachusetts Life Science Center, Massachusetts Technology Collaborative, the Mass Clean Energy Center. And they all sort of focus in certain areas, life sciences, obviously, they're, they're working with biotech and biomanufacturing companies. Mass Tech is often working with early-stage technology companies. The Mass Clean Energy Center does a lot of work with, uh, clean tech and climate tech, uh, companies. The idea with this internship program, we got a lot of feedback around how well, uh, you know, internships can be in terms of getting a young person to, to plant his or her, or their roots here and, um, start to build a future. So we proposed a, uh, tax credit program that would incent companies, we would, uh, we have some language in the bill, uh, that would incur, that would require them to prove that they're going above and beyond what they've done historically, so that we're not, uh, rewarding companies for stuff they're already doing. This would be an incentive to go above and beyond, but to create more opportunity for young people to, uh, intern, uh, either for a summer or for other parts of the year, if that, if that college student has time, and get familiar with an industry in which they're, they're studying. So you can see that criteria here would be incentive of up to, um, uh, of $5,000, 50% of wages paid, uh, per intern. We'd, we'd cap it at 100,000 for employers, uh, and it would be a, um, a, a $10 million per year pilot program if it were to go into effect. Um, we also have some policy provisions that I want to call out, uh, the first of which is for, um, as part of our talent strategy, foreign-trained physicians, we have a physi, uh, you know, obviously, we have challenges with our health and human services workforce, um, and particularly with physicians, uh, especially primary care physicians. So this is a proposal that has a lot of, um, consensus, creates a pathway for a foreign trade physician, may have got, you know, may have become a doctor in a different part of the, um, of the world, but has the qualifications. They'd have to show they're qualified, but if they are able to, uh, clear that, um, criteria, they would be able to practice medicine in, um, in Massachusetts with some conditions, they'd have to have a mentor, they'd have to, um, obviously, get approval from the appropriate board. But then they would, if they were to get their license, there'd be conditioned on them providing, um, or practicing in areas that are underserved. So the idea here is that we can get doctors, uh, to areas where there are shortages, um, in places like Western Mass, Southeastern Mass. So we think it's not gonna solve all problems, but it can help, uh, and also is a, a talent retention and traction tool. Um, workforce training, there's a, there's a, uh, some resources we have in the workforce, and it's called the Workforce Investment Trust Fund. It gets resources from, um, sports betting ra, revenue, and, uh, tremendous resource to have at this time, particularly when there's, you know, some, we're monitoring revenue collections each month. We're proposing some changes, hoping the legislature will support it, that would allow us to use this, these resources to support, um, different training programs and, and workforce development programs, um, for residents around the state. Nonprofit boards, very small provision, uh, but we, there's an issue that we brought to our attention. Uh, so we include a provision that would allow, um, uh, nonprofit board members to receive a stipend up to $500 without losing their personal civil liability, excuse. Excuse me, liability protection. The idea here is that particularly some small nonprofits. This issue could be, it could be enough to encourage someone maybe to participate and support a nonprofit board that might not otherwise. So the Massachusetts nonprofit network is a strong supporter of that provision. So I'm moving to the final bucket and let me check with, hopefully I'm doing okay on time, Tom. So uh sectors, so uh there's a couple of components to our sector strategy. The first one is climate tech, which I made reference to. At the outset, this is an area where we identified that there's a tremendous opportunity for Massachusetts to lead in the space. Again, we're doing a lot to respond to the climate crisis. But we think there's a huge upside in terms of economic development. We have so much innovation here happening in the state. We could be part of the developing the technologies and creating some of the innovation that we need in the marketplace to get serious about the climate. By making targeted investments into our ecosystem. And I think this is something, you know, can have tremendous upside for. For the Berkshires as well. I know, you know, the Berkshire Innovation Center has spent some time. They've got some startup companies that are in this space. So we're excited about it. So this is built on the original life science proposal from Governor Patrick back in two thousand eight. You may be familiar with it. So model on that, Governor Haley's proposed a billion dollars over ten years to support climate tech. And there's sort of three legs to the stool. The first is around capital, so using bond dollars to make capital investments. In areas like R and D, in manufacturing, in ways to support commercialization of climate technologies across the state. A portion of that money is also going to be set aside for supporting offshore wind. Obviously, we have tremendous resource with the. With the Atlantic off our coast and we want to lean into that space. Tax incentives, so there's three hundred million dollars set aside for creating a new tax incentive framework. Which would support climate tech companies. When we look out across the country and we see that states like California, New York, Colorado. Just to name a few, that are really leaning into this space, as well as all the federal funds that are floating out, floating around out there. I think it's important for Massachusetts to have some what we think are responsible. Incentives that we can use to support, attract and and retain climate tech companies, particularly those that are. Early stage, as they, you know, they grow out of a Berkshire Innovation Center or they grow out of university. We want them to stay here and we think having some incentives can go a long way in that strategy. The third leg of the stool is operating, so this is actually not in the bill. It's. It's tied to the budget process, but this year Governor Haley proposed thirty million dollars for the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center. Massachusetts Clean Energy Center is a quasi public agency. They'll be charged with administering this initiative. And so we we've budgeted doing that for the next ten years, which is how we get the the three hundred million. So we think this is a a bold initiative, but also an initiative I think is. Is makes a lot of sense for the state and I think we're optimistic could. Really generate a strong return for Massachusetts and really allow us to become a leader. We're, you know, we're leader in a lot of ways in this space. By investing in it, we think we can. Emerge that much stronger and and grow a new cluster across Massachusetts. The next component, another big chunk of the bill is still in sectors is life sciences. So the Governor Haley is proposing to extend life sciences initiative for another ten years. So it would be another billion dollars over the next ten years to support the Massachusetts Life Science Center and their mission. So a big chunk of that, five hundred million is for capital, so making investments in. Uh equipment, lab space and and the like across the state. I will call out, we're working with the Mass Life Science Center to sort of change our approach. In terms of, we want to be bold and we want to be ambitious. We're the global epicenter for life sciences. And so we're really leaning into ways we can do more cross-sector collaboration. How can we bring? The healthcare system, how can we bring hospitals, how can we bring community health providers into the fold? How can we do more medical technology? And we think that there's real upside there. We're fortunate to win when President Biden's. Launched his ARPA H initiative a couple of years ago. We've won Massachusetts, won one of his hubs, the Investor Catalyst Hub, which is sort of a. Reinforces that we do view ourselves, that the world uses, in the country views as a leader in the space. And so we think we we need to continue to lean into this. And I I want to call out that health equity is something we're really thinking about with this, with this vision. We are, you know, there's a lot of tremendous things happening in Cambridge and in in other areas of the state. But we want to make sure that also we're seeing the benefits. To our residents. There's a lot of disparities across Massachusetts, both on a regional level, but on a demographic level as well. And so. Really planning to elevate health equity and find ways to support our residents. And in stronger ways through this vision. This also includes expanding and extending incentives, similar to what I said in climate tech. States like Texas, California, New York, Pennsylvania, Indiana, Indiana. New Jersey are hyper competitive in the space and so. We want to continue to be. You know, be prepared for, you know, business development engagement and ways to support. Life sciences, biotech, medical technology companies and their decisions to stay and grow here in Massachusetts. It also includes some, again, not in this bill, but we also budget for operating resources over the next ten years to support things that we can't do. With capital or tax incentives. So that's our our two big initiatives. You probably hear about climate tech and life sciences, so I've just covered those last two slides. I'm going to go through those last couple of slides pretty quickly, Tom, so I'll be mindful of time. There's a lot on this slide. I'll try to, I'll call it the key key pieces, but we, this bill also includes a lot of support for. The innovation economy and so. It includes ninety nine million dollars for advanced manufacturing resources, so supporting. Higher ed institutions and manufacturing companies with targeted investments into that ecosystem. R and D matching grant fund. We have done a lot of great work with the University of Massachusetts system. And other higher ed institutions in terms of leveraging some of the research that they're doing and and helping support it. Be commercialized and be an economic driver. The Small Business Technical Grants Program is one by our our quasi called Mass Ventures. They support early stage companies. Some of our new programs I want to spotlight quickly, the Applied AI Hub, as I mentioned early on, the. You know, AI has been around for quite some time, but it has really burst onto the scene scene in the last twelve months and we want to be. We want to be. You know, we want to anticipate what it might mean for our key sectors and so we're looking to lean into it in ways where we can use AI to be applied to our key sectors. And help grow our economy. It's one of these things where I don't, if we don't. Get into the game, we're going to regret it. And so we're we're working on an AI strategic task force at the moment. Which is going to help inform some of our policy decisions going forward. Massachusetts Tech Hub idea is inspired by the federal government, actually. They have the. The US EDA has a tech hub program. Massachusetts competed for that. A couple of proposals didn't make it. There's still one alive down in the southeast, but we've. Want to leverage that same idea to support some great ideas that have burst on the scene. Springfield, for example, spent a lot of time working on ways they can elevate themselves. Around quantum computing, which can be important for the future. Worcester has done a lot of work on industrial bio manufacturing. And I know this is something that I'm sure the. You know, the BIC and 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 one Berkshire and others are following in in your region. So we think this is an area of like leveraging consortia to elevate the states. In key technology areas, but also we want to focus on areas outside of, outside of Boston, in areas like Worcester, Springfield. Pitts Fields, Fall River, New Bedford. Robotics, as I mentioned, we're one of the leaders in robotics on a per capita basis. We. Attract the most VC dollars in the country. So there's tremendous upside there. Robotics is really becoming a horizontal where it's being used across several different industries. We want to continue to keep our foot on the gas there. Our Business Builds Program is a new idea to help support businesses and their decisions as as they make. Whether they decide to grow, expand, or locate their businesses. EDIP is one of our biggest, or one of our. Strongest economic development incentive tools. We've proposed some changes to right sizes so that it can be used. More effectively, particularly with early stage companies. Like I said before, there's some states that are are really. Being super aggressive with economic development deals, Ohio, New York. Arizona, Texas, Georgia, they've all been super aggressive with massive. Economic development incentive deals. That's not the game we're in, but we do want to be smart and and leverage what we do have. This program is about. Twenty five to thirty million dollars a year. We want to make some adjustments so it can be more effective and and right sized for twenty twenty four. Matching R and D fund is just a a an adjustment to make sure that our public. State schools can compete fairly for this program the same way some of our private schools are. So we're making a slight adjustment for how. The matching equation is done for state funds. Small businesses, obviously super important to the state. They're make up about ninety eight percent of our businesses and and employ. More than forty percent of. Or the state's workforce. So we have proposed some tools in here to support. As part of our, you know, post-COVID, we're still. We want to, you know, figure out what is a sustainable strategy to support small businesses. So we seek to leverage. Community development, financial institutions, as well as some matching funds for. For small businesses, Business Power is a program run by Mass Growth Capital Corporation. You may be familiar with them. They had run the Small Business Grant Program during the pandemic. And then I will, I will go through the next three here.
I let him in before.
And in the, I will go through these last three bullets here in detail, but we, I just want to call out, we have some relief in here for. Workers comp for a certain cohort of self-insured business groups. We also are incorporating a definition for micro businesses because we understand that. Small businesses aren't the same, and so we want to have a more elevated focus on businesses with ten or fewer employees. Now we're working, it's an ongoing project. We're working on ways to improve access for minority owned construction firms in in public construction. Tourism and the creative economy, as I called out at the start, we want to elevate this as a as a economic development strategy for the state. So we have. Several reauthorizations for existing programs to support tourism assets and and cultural facilities. We've also proposed live theater tax credit to support. Regional. Live theater productions. Again, this is from a competitive standpoint, neighboring states like Rhode Island, as well as other areas like Illinois and Louisiana. Have been aggressive in the space and we think there's an opportunity to. To level the playing field with a modest tax credit. The governor also announced, you may have seen this, some additional actions alongside the bill. One, she's in the process of standing up an advisory committee on cultural policy development. That would be, we would work on it in consultation with the Mass Cultural Council. And she's also announced a desire to name an artisan resident and a poet laureate, again, to support the the creative economy. And then finally, just to close the loop on on the whole bill, you're getting the full rundown here. Within my office, where I work for the Executive Office of Economic Development, we also have the Consumer, the Office of Consumer Affairs, Business Regulations. Consumer protection is something we also think about. So there's two provisions in the bill. One around EV charging, just to make sure, you know, there's a lot more electric vehicles on the road. We want to make sure that charging stations. Particularly public charging stations are being tracked, being tested. We can make sure they're reliable and they're working. And then we're making some adjustments to a law that's been around for quite some time, but there's a home improvement contractor program. Just to protect consumers and also, you know, make sure contractors are being held accountable. For for smaller home projects, making some updates just to make sure that's right size for the present day. Thank you for bearing with me. That was a hundred and eleven page bill and. And and about eighteen slides there, so I appreciate it. I'm going to pull this down now and then happy to have a discussion.
Well, thank you, Rory. I I see why you were concerned about time. There's a lot of meat in there. But I think Doug has his hand up for the first question, so and then. The questions after that.
Thank you. Just just a couple of points. Thank you for the presentation. You talked about. Adjusting. Regulations so that physicians, you know, coming from overseas could. Fast track to be able to get certified. I would suggest that there are many other areas in in education and and technology. Where we know from the Berkshire Immigrant Center that we get people with PhDs from overseas who. Who can't get certified in the state. So I I think we might want to look further than just physicians. On internships, the internships for college students is great, particularly for the foreign students in our universities. Get those internships and get hooked up so they stay here, but. We don't want to forget the necessity of funding internships at the high school level. We have a connecting activities program across the state. It's very strong in Berkshire County. But every year there's a threat that that's not going to be. Be certified, you know, refunded. So that's, don't don't forget. That for rural communities, hooking the students up in an internship early. Makes them realize what employment opportunities are in their area so that they don't flee the rural areas. And the final thing I have is on the. On the. Charging stations in Berkshire County, most of the charging stations are level two, which is useless for anybody who needs a quick charge. We need to really fast track the level, level three chargers.
Thanks, Doug. Very helpful feedback.
Christine, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. That was very informative. As part of the Rural Issues Committee that BRPC has, we have spent a lot of time. Looking at a real problem for small towns and that is getting. Employees to assume the jobs that have been filled for years and years by. People who have done a marvelous job, but are now getting to retirement age. And so as you're talking about all of these internships, maybe also look at government service. As one that could be very valuable to keeping small towns viable. And then just another quick. Point is that all these grants sound wonderful, but we don't have a grant writer in our town. And many, many other small communities don't. And so I really hope there's some thought given. To have the regional planning agencies be funded at a level where they can help towns. Develop grants and go through the entire system, because I think without that. Rural towns are still going to be falling, falling to the bottom of the pot.
Thanks, Christine. Very helpful feedback.
Thanks, Christine. Any other questions or comments? Laura.
Thank you. Sorry. Hi Rory, I'm Laura Brennan with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Thank you so much for this. Every time I learn more about the bill through one of the presentations, it's it's definitely helpful. I I wanted to ask about one of the emerging or. Priority sectors that that you've got amongst this mix and that's tourism. Arts and culture specifically. When I combine that with the emphasis on rural, for us, that's leaving out a whole segment of tourism and that's outdoor recreation. The the specific programs that are reauthorized here are really geared toward. Renovation, restoration, construction of facilities. Both the MCC's Cultural Facilities Fund and then the Destination Development Fund under Mott. And that leaves out the kinds of work that we would want to do to promote outdoor recreation. As a really major part of our tourism sector. So I'm wondering if there are places in the bill that I'm not seeing outdoor recreation that I need to hone in on. Or perhaps that's an area that's going to be invested in through another vehicle. Because you did specifically say that there are other vehicles. Out there. Focusing on on adjacent issues.
Yeah, it's a great question, Laura. We we. I will say for the tourism asset, which I can, I can tell you're familiar with it. The Destination Development against the tourism asset program, we did intentionally include a reference to. We use the terminology acrotourism in the line item to expand the the aperture of the program. we use the terminology acrotourism in the line item to expand the aperture of the program so that we could do things like support outdoor recreation. So I will say that small provision, but we did include an additional proviso to so that program can be expanded more than it presently is. So that is in there. In the, in the annual operating budget exercise, we are hoping to get additional money for the Tourism Trust Fund. I will set largely, you know, that goes to regional tourism councils as well as to the, to our office, the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism to do sort of more promotional things. So doesn't square exactly with what you said. And the last point I would say is our friends at the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs have now launched have a point person in outdoor recreation with whom, you know, we're starting to have a dialogue with and figure this out. And I know we, we had the regional listening session in Pittsfield. There was a number of stakeholders that are, you know, running businesses in that industry or are adjacent businesses that benefit from people who are coming out for activities like rafting or hiking or, you know, climbing. And so we definitely recognize that that is a growing opportunity for the region and something we'll continue to think about.
Thank you.
Right. Are there any other questions? Yeah, Tom.
Malcolm, I just would like to figure, figure out the process of what's next with this bill. Rory, if you could tell us the process and if there was a hearing date yet that had been established? Or how is this? The legislative process sometimes is a little bit mysterious. I wondered if you could help us sort through that a little bit.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. It's a good question. So the bill has been formally referred to the Joint Committee on Economic Development Emerging Technologies. It's chaired by, on the House side, Jerry Parasella, who hails from Beverly. And then on the Senate side, Barry Feingold, who hails from Andover. There's, those committees are made up of twenty different legislators. I can't recall them all off the top of my head, but I imagine there's certainly some from your neck of the woods. There isn't yet a hearing date, Tom, to answer your question. We are anticipating that will hopefully be named or announced in the, in the coming weeks. The bill technically, the committee needs to either act on it or get an extension order within thirty days of receiving it. So we're waiting to see what they do there and hopefully there'll be a hearing announced sooner. You know, sooner or later, and we have, you know, we have a really good relationship with the chairs of the committee. We're having a dialogue with them as well as, you know, legislators around the state. I know my boss, Yvonne Howe, is meeting with our probably Bouvier soon. And we're also meeting with her Barrett soon as well. So we're, we're having a, you know, continuing dialogue with, with different legislative offices. And then just a, so once the, the committee will have a hearing, they will then act on it and the bill will eventually make its way through the House and through the Senate, hopefully to a conference committee and then back to the governor's desk. And we anticipate the, you know, typically, at least history would say the economic development bill is one of the last bills that the legislature does before their break at the end of formal session. So it probably will be end of July when, when this bill makes its way, hopefully back to the governor's desk.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. And I think, you know, if, if there are people interested in various aspects of the bill, supporting it when it comes to get a committee date would be, I think, a very good idea.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. I'll put my email in the chat and I'll also email you a copy of the deck just so you have it for your, for your membership here.
Any other questions for Rory? Well, Rory, thank you very much. We still have four minutes.
Made up for last time there, I guess. Thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate your interest in this and in the partnership and hope to talk to you again soon.
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, the next item on their agenda is a presentation of EverSource's Electric Sector Modernization Plan. We've been talking about electric transmission and distribution systems in regard, in relation to the state's plans for some time. And this is a great opportunity to hear representatives of EverSource describing the solar sector modernization plan. We have with us several representatives from EverSource. Mike, he's Vettavelli.
Give it a shot. Give it a shot. Let me see how good you are.
Okay, Vettavelli.
Vita Valley. No problem. Our past is Patrick's day, so we're all good. So again, thank you to the Berkshire Regional Planning Agency for inviting us to this. We did a kind of a general presentation last month to the kind of the executive directors of all the regional planning agencies in Boston. And it was a very good dialogue and we encouraged the regional planning agencies to, you know, if they wanted kind of a sectional, regional presentation, we'd be happy to do that. So I have a, I have an all star team with me today that can really go into detail with it. Now, I did share the presentation earlier. Is that something that I shared with Tom? Are you able to pull that up, Tom, and work the slides?
Yeah, Laura from my office is going to do that. She's.
Great. So let me just kick it off. Let me just kind of introduce my team here that we have. So with us today, we have Jacob Lucas, who's the Director of Transmission System Planning. He'll be presenting Juan Martinez, who's the manager of system planning on the distribution side. He'll be the first presenter. And then we also have Aaron Angstrom, who's the Director of Regulatory Affairs. But also we have two other key, key players as well. We have Amy Henderson from my community relations team, and she handles the Berkshire County Region for Community Relations. And then we have Chris Comack, who's an engineer in Juan's group. So with that, I know we have a lot of great information and I'd like to get right into the slides and we'll, we'll start off with Juan. So Juan.
Yep, I'll take care of over. Can you hear me correctly first? Yes. Okay, great. So, yeah, let me see. We're in the first slide. Okay, good. Yeah, so I'll start it off. We can start with the agenda. That's fine. That's the next slide. And while I'll, I'll cover the Electric Sector Modernization Plan, we, we modify the slides to cover a little bit more of Western Mass part on this presentation. Jacob is going to come up and cover the, the, the transmission upgrades after that. Okay, so next slide. Next slide. Okay, so just a little bit of background. Right, so the Electric, Electric Sector Modernization Plan was already submitted to the department under DPU twenty four ten. And basically, it's a, it's a, it's a long term plan, five, ten years and twenty fifty. And what we've shown basically is all the infrastructure that's required to meet the state goals. And this is all driven by the state goals, the greenhouse gas emission goals by the state, reduce carbon emissions by at least eighty five percent by twenty fifty. So it's thirty percent by twenty twenty five, fifty percent by twenty thirty, and by twenty fifty, the eighty five percent. And the Electric Sector Modernization Plan is the utilities plan on how to get there, basically. So that's what you'll see now. And we, we, you know, most of the plan is at the, is at the, you'll see both at the substation and at the transmission level. But I'll start with the low level, the substation, right? This overall map is a good, it's a good slide to show what's in the system now. So I'll focus on the Western Mass. So but, but it's, it's good to have a reference, right, in our service territory on how the different systems are aligned. And we also show the EJ communities numbers per the service territory. But in Western Mass, basically, if we take the Western Mass system, which is everything that's highlighted, we have about twenty six, what we call bulk distribution stations. If you combine all the stations, the firm capacity is about one point three gigawatts of firm capacity, about a hundred and seventeen thousand EJ customers. And then if you take each one of those substations, the average substation room is about seventeen MBA. And most stations vary from, you know, let's say twenty MBA to all the way to seventy five, one hundred and fifty MBA. So that's kind of the range of substations capacity. And as you know, the Western Mass is more, you know, it's not as low dense as, let's say, the city of Boston. So you can see the difference, right? In metro Boston, there's twenty one substations. But even though there's twenty one, the firm capacity of those stations are three gigawatts. So it's almost three times with less substation. Why? They're bigger, right? They're a lot bigger in order to supply more dense load, basically. So this gives a good breakdown of the system. Next slide. And as mentioned before, so the driver is the greenhouse gas emissions, right? And the plan for the state to get there, right, is take everything that, you know, emits gas now, so you, you know, and convert it to electric, basically. So you, you can think of it as, you know, you're, you're, you're heating right now, going from, let's say, gas or other sources to electric. Your electric vehicles going from gas to electric and you go down that route. And that's, that's basically how the state goals get there, right? If you look at this slide, this is our breakdown at a system level still. I'm still showing system level numbers. But this is how the system will look in the next, you know, twenty thirty five, twenty forty, forty five, fifty. And this chart breaks down into two. If you can think of at the left side, you know, where you have twenty, twenty eight, twenty thirty three, and the right side, the twenty thirty five after. And what you see here is clearly, from now until twenty thirty three, we, we still plan for kind of a summer peaking system. And you can see it there. So gigawatts is about six, close to seven gigawatts. This is at the substation level for the entire system. And you can see how, starting in twenty thirty five now, the, the chart is changing. So a lot of the heating, which is the kind of the blue color, a lot of the transportation starts to get bigger and the other electric, you know, orders are, are the same. But you see how a lot of the chunk of the growth now is, is heating. So you can think of the system starting in twenty thirty five to convert from a summer peaking to a winter peaking system. And we're talking an increase, solo way at the top, but you're talking a twenty percent increase in demand by twenty thirty three and about a hundred and fifty percent by twenty fifty. So when you translate the state goals, when you translate the greenhouse gas emission goals, this is what we see at a system level in our service territory. Next slide. And this is almost the same slide, but for the solar. So, so the state goal also has a solar. It has a goal for how much energy is going to be generated via, via solar instead of, you know, traditional generation. And the Commonwealth, the state goal is for six gigawatts by twenty forty five and nine gigawatts by twenty fifty. This is solar generation. And what we've broken down here is how we see the system now and how we see in the future based on the solar that's currently in queue and the solar that, you know, we're forecasting for the future. So right now, as we sit in twenty twenty five, we have about one point, let's say one point five, which is the dark there currently installed in the queue, one point five gigawatts of solar. If you add everything that's in the queue, not installed, but in the queue, we're about three gigawatts system wide for the solar. A lot of the new solar is actually coming to Western Mass. So the southeastern portion, CMA basically, Massachusetts, that's saturated. A lot of, we already proposed a lot of what we call group SIP studies in which we combined a group of DERs and, and, and developed the system to enable the DR that's there, future DR. But we're seeing a lot of the are now starting to grow in, in Western Mass. So, so a lot of the new in queue DR is part of Western Mass. And the ESMP, the Electric Sector Modernization Plan, chapter six goes over all the groups, studies and all the SIP projects that are proposed in Western Mass to enable solar. But going back to the figure here, we currently have in twenty twenty three, a hosting capacity of about, let's say, close to four gigawatts, right? And then if you combine all the projects that we have that, that are being proposed in the SMP, that goes up to close to six gigawatts. That's, that's the black line that you see there in the middle. But that doesn't get us to the state goal. If you look at twenty fifty, the state goals, it's, it's about nine gigawatts. So it's, it's not even close to the state goal. So a lot of work to be done there. It gets us to about twenty forty five, but from twenty forty five to twenty fifty, we're going to have to get creative. Maybe new technologies. That's what the two different green lights are, green bars are showing. It's, you know, what can be done with other options. But the, you know, that's where we have to get creative because even with all the, what is being proposed right now, I, I, we don't meet the state goals of nine gigawatts. Next one. So that was, one of those were, let me move something on my screen here. Okay. So all of those were state level slides, just to give you a good picture of how it looks at, at the, at the upper level. But now let's talk individually, let's, let's start to, start to focus on Western Mass. So as I mentioned before, these are the same numbers as before. So current number of substations. If you take the entire plan, the entire Electric Sector Modernization Plan and summarize it basically for, for, for the different regions, right? Especially Western Mass. This is what it would look like. It's two new stations and about eleven upgrades, so station upgrades. The incremental electrification capacity that's enabled is about close to a gigawatt, so eight hundred megawatts. And the DER hosting capacity from, from this proposed work is about six gigawatts. That will be an electrification capacity percent of a hundred and thirty eight percent. But I'll cover later in the slide how this is a little bit misleading because Western Mass is, is, is unique in the sense that you have, you know, Springfield in the middle and that's kind of the, you know, your, your, your dense area. But then outside, it's a lot more rural, let's say, than, than if you compare it to Boston or even southeastern mass. Next slide. This is what those upgrades that were mentioned look like. So, and I'll, I'll go in detail with this. So if you look at the right side first, the figures in the SMP were proposing three, three categories here, right? So the gray is the substation upgrades that are required for capacity or reliability. The green is what we call the SIP DR project. These are the group studies, the SIP projects that were proposed previously under, that were already adjudicated. And then we're pending a decision on the DPU, but these are already submitted. So that's the Plainfield Blanford Group Study. And then the orange are the new SIP projects that are proposed under this ESMP. And these are the areas where they are. So in Watley Deerfield, we have, we have one big SIP project proposed there. That's, that's an area where we're seeing a lot of DR growth. Also Dalton Hinsdale area, we're seeing a lot of DR growth there as well. And then down in Southwick and Agawam, that's the, those are the two additional areas where there's a lot of DR growth right now. So between, you know, Dalton Hinsdale down to Plainfield, Southwick and Agawam, that's where we are seeing a lot of the DR growth. And then that area northeast on Watley Deerfield, you know, considering our service territory. And as you can see, I mean, most of the growth, the actual load growth is on your, you know, your Springfield area. We have the, we have about six upgrades and one new station. So the new station is proposing the, we call it Worthington Station. So that's between the Plainfield and Blanford area. That's the one shown between twenty thirty and thirty four, and then you can see the six upgrades. And then for the SIPs, that's also the timeline there. So the table on the left shows you the timeline for both capacity and DER driven projects. Next slide. Okay. Another part that we did in this Electric Sector Modernization Plan was to give options, right? So this was actually asked by the G Mac. We were asked to present different scenarios. And there is actually, if you go to table nine, twelve of the Electric Sector Modernization Plan in SMP, you have, the scenario for Western Mass is there. But basically, you know, we presented all the work required for one scenario, but we, we didn't stop there, right? So we included scenarios for what it would look like if you have full electrification, if you have some kind of hybrid demand response or a high electric, what happens if it's more electrification? Second, I see something there in the middle. This is me. Oh. Yep, we're coming back. So, yeah, the person showing the screen, I'm seeing something different now. So yeah, the person showing the screen, I'm seeing something different now. Hopefully we. Yep, there you go. So we include different scenarios for electric vehicles, basically. And that's shown in that table there, different scenarios for energy efficiency. So that's all laid down in the Electric Sector Modernization Plan. And why these scenarios are helpful? Because I showed you earlier, right? So we don't get there with all the proposed work, especially on the generation side for Western Mass, we don't necessarily get there. So we're going to have to basically get creative. And maybe, maybe there's a scenario where there's more energy efficiency, or there's a scenario where there's more, there's more of a hybrid scenario instead of full electrification. So those are the kind of things that we have to play now and analyze to see how we're going to meet the 2050 goal. Okay, so this is, yeah, this is the last, this is a slide that shows how we see the entire Western Mass region in 2050. So, and I specifically brought this slide to make a point. So right now, we have 1.3 gigawatts, let's say, of install capacity in Western Mass out of, you know, in our service territory, right? If you take all the upgrades, the SIPs and the capacity upgrades, that gives us about, let's say, 900 megawatts, 0.9 gigawatts of capacity, right? We see the peak in 2050 for the Western Mass region to 1.6 gigawatts, basically, if we count for the state goals. So if you just look at the numbers, you say, well, then Western Mass is okay. There's actually more than enough, because you have a surplus of 600 megawatts, right? 0.6 gigawatts. And the challenge with Western Mass is that 0.6 gigawatt is there, because most of the upgrades, as you saw in the MAF, they're actually in the outskirts of the Springfield area, right? And those upgrades, at least right now, they're mostly driven to enable the DG that's currently queued up in those areas, basically. Those reinforcements will enable DG. For that 1.6 gigawatt, we're talking load, right? And where's the load in Western Mass? It's in your city areas, right? It's in Pitts Field, it's in Springfield. So we're going to have to do more study for the Western Mass, you know, in subsequent years, and zoning where those needs are going to be for the cities, basically. Because the fact that it's at a holistic level for Western Mass, the fact that there is a surplus of 600 megawatts, that just means there's a surplus, because there's a surplus to connect the yard. But that doesn't mean there's a surplus for load. And that's where we're going to have to do more analysis and find out, well, where's that load going to come up? Because potentially, more substations and more upgrades will be needed to basically enable that additional load. We still have some time, we have enough capacity, basically, and the Electric Sector Modernization Plan is every five years. We still have some time to kind of do that analysis, but that's what's next, basically, for the Western Mass region, is where's that growth of load going to come up? And where's those upgrades are going to be needed to just, basically, for load growth, not necessarily for generation? And I'm not sure if we ask questions now or later, or if there's a question, but I think that's my last slide. Next one. We'll put Jacob next, I think. Yep. Go ahead, Jacob.
Sure, thank you so much, Juan. I did see a question in the chat, so you might want to take a look at that while I get started, but I'm happy to get started. So my name is Jacob Lucas. I am Director of Transmission System Planning at Eversource. If we just jump to the next slide, there's a reason why we start with distribution when we give this presentation, and that is because when we think about the trends, the electric transmission system upgrades that are necessary to enable the Electric Sector Modernization Plan, and remember, by transmission, we're generally referring to electric system components that are at 100,000 volts and higher. So it's kind of, if you were to do the analogy, it's kind of like the interstate highway system of the transit, of the transit system. So that's what the transmission system generally does. But what we've learned over the last few years, we've seen happen over the last few years, is it's not just the ESMP. There are many, many, many new factors that are happening on the distribution system that are triggering transmission system upgrades. So I have four key takeaways from my slide, and this is one of them. Gone are the days where top-down transmission system planning is effective. It's not. There's too much happening on the transmission system, ESMP being one example. We are seeing many new single-spot-load interconnection requests in the tens to hundreds of megawatts in size, seeking to interconnect to the transmission system. We also have the Distributed Energy Resources Effect system operators study. These are essentially just the transmission studies necessary to enable solar PV and the capital investment projects that Juan referred to earlier. These capital investment projects are also trying to enable solar PV, but we do them in groups, and they are, these transmission studies for these solar PVs are looking at, each one, they're looking at hundreds of megawatts of new solar PV resources. So bottom line is, over the past decade, transmission system planning usually has gone from top-down, looking at floor, like big regional zonal changes and transmission impact, but now it's bottoms-up, because so much is changing on the distribution system. Next slide, please. So if we look at quickly, kind of the other main thing that Eversource, Eversource has modeled from a transmission, so the ESMP, I should clarify, the Electric Sector Modernization Plan, is focuses on distribution system upgrades. There's a whole lot of reasons for that. I'm not going to get into jurisdictional and other things, but obviously, if we're making all these changes to the distribution system, at a minimum, you need to design and engineer the transmission upgrades, at least to provide a source to these new stations. But we're actually learning now that we've run the transmission study for the SMP, it's actually much, much more than that. So really quickly, what the transmission, what the Eversource Transmission System Study for the SMP is looking at is the other half to this equation of decarbonizing, which is delivering the clean energy resources, right? Because the only way electrification works is as if it's fed by clean resources. And you all probably know, but from, you know, the Massachusetts Decarbonization Roadmap has 30-plus gigawatts of offshore wind, dozens of gigawatts of solar PV. And so what the transmission study is modeling, it's delivering that new offshore wind and solar PV that, no surprise, is not located where our current thermal generators are located, but delivering those new clean resources to the electrified load. And what we've seen is, this was one of the key takeaways, what we've seen is, like, no regrets themes emerge, because when you're looking this far out into the future, it's very, very hard to what that would look like. But if you model enough different scenarios and you see themes emerge across all the scenarios, you kind of zero in on what we're referring to as no regrets solutions. I assume everyone refers to these as high likelihood concerns, but essentially, these that really kind of regardless of what basically, these types of transmission upgrades are going to be needed. Those are our transmission study. Next, please. Is that importantly, we have identified, and many other transmission orders, not just Eversource, many new offshore wind points of interconnection on New England, especially along the south coast. And this is focusing on the Martha's Vineyard, the roughly 30 miles southwest of Martha's Vineyard. But we've already identified 13 gigawatts of landing points for these offshore wind farms. It exceeds all of the state's combined procurement authority, and we're trying to stay ahead of this, right? Because we need to be a solution provider and enable viable points of interconnection for these offshore wind farms. But we still are not at a point where we're seeing the need. If you're reading any of the trade press or whatever, like, there's been talk about, like, offshore HVDC transmission network, we're nowhere near utilizing the existing available capacity of the network onshore. I just want to drive this point home, because I just cannot emphasize how expensive an offshore transmission network would be. We're not there yet. We are absolutely not there yet. We've already seen 13 gigawatts, and this is along the south coast. So where we've gone now is we're moving to the Gulf of Maine lead areas, because those are probably going to come into Maine, Boston, Sema, southeastern Mass, and we're identifying more and more points there. So the point is, we continue to identify viable points with very little onshore network upgrades to enable offshore wind. Okay, next slide, please. I just wanted to state, so I have a team that's working on Eversource's offshore wind joint venture with Ersted. So we are literally on the front lines of enabling our nation's new industry. My team literally was on the South Fork Wind Project, which just announced last week. We've enabled, all of the 12 wind turbines have been fully commissioned and energized, and it's our nation's first large-scale wind farm in federal waters. You've probably been hearing, though, that there's been some financial turmoil in the offshore wind industry in the United States, and I just wanted to touch on it quickly. So I highlight here upfront that there have been three large projects in New England alone that have successfully taken the financial investment decision. So that means that these projects are proceeding regardless of whatever economic headwinds might happen. Those are South Fork, which is fully operational, interconnecting into the East Hamptons, that was fun, on Long Island, but also the Vineyard Wind Farm, that's interconnected to, I'm sorry, Cape Cod in Massachusetts, and Revolution Wind, which is another Eversource project, interconnected to Province, I'm sorry, King County in Rhode Island. But all three of these projects are moving forward. Now, yes, there have been projects that have requested renegotiation of their power purchase agreement, but if you look at the chart here, it really was inevitable, because when they submitted their bids into the RFPs that they were rewarded for, the secured overnight financial rate, which is just a common measure of borrowing money, essentially, it was much lower than where we are today, which unfortunately, now where we are today is where major equipment is being manufactured that is very, very, very expensive. So yes, some contracts have been renegotiated. Sunrise Wind, which is nearly a one gigawatt project that Eversource is also involved with, just won its rebid. Yes, the levelized cost of energy for these projects has increased from what we originally thought it was. And this is where all of the headlines in the trade press has essentially been, oh, United States offshore wind industries in shambles. It's not that bad, because we've seen indications, for example, I highlight one in Virginia with Dominion, where the coastal Virginia offshore wind project, massive project, 2,600 megawatts, bigger than anything we have in New England, has just filed with the state regulator to lower their levelized cost of energy, which must mean they believe they're going to be able to produce power for less than what they originally thought, down from $90 per megawatt hour, excuse me, down to $77 per megawatt hour. So it's not all bad, and I'm just, I'm just trying to provide a little bit of a sanity check to some of the headlines that I've seen in trade press, like, it's a train wreck, and the United States offshore wind industries in disaster. Okay, next slide. I just want to kind of close with my final point. So this is kind of my fourth big takeaway, and I try to emphasize this any chance that I can get, but I just want to just, I just want to say, and I hope I found a good analogy, because I always struggle with driving this point home, but Massachusetts Decarbonization Roadmap, across all scenarios, identified the need to increase our intertie capacity with our neighboring regions. I cannot emphasize enough how important, when you have a resource mix, generation resource mix, that is comprised so heavily of non-dispatchable renewable resources, how important it is to be able to share a diversity of load, but a diversity of generation with your neighbors. And so the California Independent System Operator is roughly a 50-gigawatt system. Juan previously was talking about Massachusetts numbers, but I'm going to zoom way out now. So all of New England, we're right now at a 25-gigawatt system, roughly, map system peak, roughly, summer. We're going, most projections show us going to a 50-gigawatt system, maybe even higher, but roughly 50 gigawatts, they're doubling all of New England's electric load. Conveniently, that's approximately where California Independent System Operator is right now, 50 gigawatts. And if you were to add up all of the transfer capability across all of the interconnecting transmission lines that California has with its neighbors, it's roughly 44 gigawatts. New England currently has 10. We are not even close. What does this mean? What does this translate to? This translates to potentially dumping and spilling a whole bunch of offshore wind that we pay to bill, but we can't use, because we're, ISO New England currently has scenarios for all of New England to have a minimum load in the 500-megawatt range, right? Like, it's astonishing how low our minimum load is going. Why? Because we're building so much solar. The point is, we want to be able to use this renewable power that we're building. And another example is, it can be economically beneficial. So the West realized this, and they built a whole energy imbalance market to be able to move this power on essentially like a five-minute basis. The bottom line is, you can research this, you can Google this, it's called the Western Energy Imbalance Market. So just Google it, it's easy to find, they have a homepage, they'll give you the benefits. Last year alone, this intertie capacity benefited the West by $1.7 billion. It is massively economically beneficial, but unfortunately, New England cannot solve this. We cannot, we keep having interregional projects that are proposed and fail. So it's very, very important. Happy to answer any questions, but now I'm going to turn it over to Aaron Angerson to talk about stakeholder engagement on the next slide. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jacob. All right, if we go to the next slide, can you tell that Juan and Jacob love what they do? So, and I love what I do, which is stakeholder engagement. So one of the key components of this plan, of course, is making sure that we are communicating not only with our municipalities, but also at the community level, to understand what each of our communities' priorities are. And many of the communities that we serve have their own goals. I know out in Western Mass, obviously, and we've heard this as part of the ESMP public hearings and public information sessions that we've held, you know, DG and solar interconnection is a big focus for folks out in Western Mass, and we hear you loud and clear. Juan mentioned, as well as Jacob, you know, for the pending SIP project, and this plan ultimately enables just even that much more interconnection. So ultimately, when we're doing our stakeholder outreach, we understand that without stakeholder buy-in, and stakeholders can range from developers, solar developers, to municipalities, to communities, to environmental justice advocates, to environmental advocates and climate advocates, the list goes on. But ultimately, we want to make sure we understand and we level set not only where we're coming from, but also understand, you know, where our stakeholders are coming from, so we have a shared understanding. And then the next step would be to, obviously, then build on that shared understanding and develop trust, and ultimately, making sure that we, as Eversource, and, you know, as your electric provider, act on what it is that are your priorities and vice versa, making sure that we understand not only what your priorities are, but what our priorities are, and making sure that you understand our limitations. And, you know, Juan went through a lot of what the system is going to need in terms of upgrades, and sometimes there are just physical and physics limitations in terms of where we can site some of this infrastructure, or where we can build some of this infrastructure, because that infrastructure needs to go where the load is. Ultimately, though, we are going to make sure that each of our communities and each of our stakeholders have a tailored outreach approach, because Um, because each of their needs are going to be different and unique. So if we go to the next slide. So one of the things that we at ever source, as well as the other distribution companies fully recognize is that we're really good at planning. You heard from Juan, you heard from Jacob, we really understand our electric distribution system and our gas system. But ultimately, we aren't experts necessarily in engagement. And certainly we have a lot of lessons learned from past projects. But we want to hear from those that are experts in this area, um, to develop basically a freight that we can imply to all of the projects, our larger infrastructure projects. So we're developing a stakeholder advisory group amongst all national grid unit telling ever source. And we're going to have different community based organizations that on an advisory group from across the Commonwealth. So they would represent not just Eastern Mass or Southeastern Mass. We want to make sure that they're representative of all of our territories. And that includes National Grid, of course, serves Western Mass as well. And so we want to make sure that there will be somebody that could speak on behalf of Western Mass. We want to make sure that, you know, we're getting voices that not only just cover environmental justice advocates, but also potentially transportation, health, public health, low income. So we're developing a list of folks, feel free to send us a list of folks that may want to potentially sit on this advisory group. So there's going to be six members from a community based organization and the three utilities, one person from each of the utilities and then an equity and, um, an environmental justice advocate. That's the other. These meetings we're going to have, they're going to be professionally facilitated. We want to bring everyone to the table to talk about the projects that we ultimately are going to need to build, but also understand what would be the best way to do outreach for these projects. What do communities want to hear? What do neighborhoods want to understand? What do developers and what do municipalities want from us in terms of engagement? How early should we be engaging with those communities? The unique part about this ESMP is that we've taken our plan that we've always had, but we've made it very transparent and we've put it in a nice seven hundred page plan for all of you to read. So, um, it's really light reading, very easy to understand, no worries. But ultimately, it's the first time that we put it on paper and we've made it public. And so now that it is public, Juan showed you some maps of where things will need to go based on, you know, basically backing into these states' clean energy policy and goals. So now that we've made it transparent, we now have to talk with all of you and make sure we understand when would you like us to start engaging? And certainly based on when Juan was explaining kind of when we're going to have that headroom and when that headroom is going to start to shrink. Once that starts to shrink and once we need to start putting our plans in place for either building another station or making upgrades to current stations, we want to engage as early as the communities would like us to, to make sure everyone understands kind of what the type of work that we're going to be doing and making sure that we understand, could there potentially be additional benefits that we could provide to the communities as a result of hosting that infrastructure? So ultimately, that's it in a nutshell. I know we've ran past time. So I'm sure there are lots of questions for Juan and for Jacob. So I will turn it back over, um, to Tom, but any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you all. Doug's got his hand up. Uh, we do have another question first though, Doug. Um, um, in chat, uh, let's see if I can bring it out. Read the chat, oh, there it is. Uh, in chat, we had a question, um, uh, is, uh, from David, is, is growth driven by public ever source or private development? How is any disproportionate development coordinated?
Could probably tackle that. So what we call load growth or growth and, and when we do our forecast, it consists of, of various things. So one of them is what we call base growth, which could be, you know, a new house or a, a renovation of a building. Those are typically lower in size, but you know, they're more, they're more of them, basically. That's what we call base growth. Um, there's also what we call step loads. And those are, um, load additions of large customers. So think of your big commercial infrastructures, uh, business growth, large developments. So those are what we call step loads. That's an additional way, um, that we account for load growth. And then electric vehicles is also part of the, of the, of what we, we consider load growth when we do the forecast and estimate it for our plan. So depending on the area, it's a combination of some areas is, is basically the step loads. Uh, some areas could be the electric vehicle in combination with the base load. So it is actually area dependent. So in, in your commercial areas, it will be the step load because that's where the big, you know, the big buildings are coming up. In more residential areas could be your base load because there's more, um, development in terms of individual units. So that's what we consider, um, growth, basically. I hope that answered the question.
David, was that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I guess, I guess we're, we're just looking for, I've seen some in Dalton, at least there've been several projects that come up and we've run into, we've, they've gone through some development phase and they get to every source and every source says, well, it's too big, we can't, we can't plug them in. And that, uh, that some of the projects have died, others, others have stalled and that restarted. And we're not really quite sure how, how this all happens, how things are prioritized is, does every source guess where things are going to need to be, need to go? And if it doesn't quite happen in, in exactly that way or, or geographically is different, then how did they, how did they deal with that, with that kind of variance? If they're, if all the growth doesn't happen next to Springfield, if it happens in Dalton or in Athol or someplace else, or they don't expect exactly what, what is a process or what goes on there? And how much notice do we get?
Yes, sorry. So I'm not too familiar with the, with kind of the details, but you know, what I can tell you is all of the, all of the new business or step loads, they come into the same processes, you know, they, they come in, um, through the standard ever sort process, there's a separate department that actually takes care of applications. And then they get to a point where, you know, we have to do an analysis to see what is required for them to connect. Now unfortunately, you know, some areas of the system, you know, they're not designed for large loads, right? Especially those residential areas. And, you know, in order to connect a big load in there, so probably reinforcements, even substations or feeder reinforcements are required. And, and that happens, that will happen often in areas where the system is weak. And then you, you know, we're trying to integrate a big step load in there. So that could be the scenario that you're describing, but in terms of the process, it's the same process. It's basically the customer applies, you know, the engineering team does the analysis to see what's required. And sometimes that, you know, what's required, it's not a small construction anymore, like a pole or a couple of wires. What's required is transmission, substation and feeder work because the system itself that is there is not designed for that. Now, the good thing actually, bringing it back to the SMP, actually. So the good thing with this entire, uh, electric sector monetization plan is, you know, one of the goals of the plan is to build the system to enable the growth, basically. So we're trying to build it now ahead of time. So that if a large development does come in, let's say in the, in the, in the northeast area where it's not as populated. And, you know, if that system was, has been already upgraded, you know, it is a lot easier now for large customers to come in and connect. So that's one of the advantages of this entire, um, electric sector monetization plan that it, that it, it allows to present to the DPU what is required to upgrade the system to enable electrification. And with that, uh, hopefully it takes care of a lot of those concerns of, of large customers that try to interconnect to weak systems.
And if I could add one, I mean, one of the things I think we've learned, um, as we've now, now that we have the SMP, we're focusing on executing on the SMP. And when what, what we've click, quickly learned is it likes, it's saturate, uh, certain aspects of the project development lifecycle. And so David, to your, to, to the question, it's like, one of the things we're seeing is like, so we have, we essentially have like standard, uh, transformer sizes, for example, right? And so, um, there's a whole lot of reasons for that, spares and other, and maintenance and other things. But like, so even to the extent that, and so now what we're doing is we're looking at our sourcing strategies. Because these, these, these large power equipments, you know, you're looking at three, four years, uh, to, to build and, and, and deliver. And so what it is, is we're looking at sourcing strategies like, okay, how do we now, instead of onesies, twosies, how do we, how do we buy these kind of in bulk such that even if, you know, it's not going to go over here in location A, but we can actually utilize that same piece of equipment because it's standardized over a location B instead, because that's where load growth that we didn't anticipate is actually materializing. We can do that. And so that's kind of another example of how like, we're definitely, uh, looking at the entire lifecycle and how we might be able to kind of, um, be kind of, be kind of smart about it. I hope that helps.
And Aaron, Aaron's group would be the group to kind of, kind of get in that conversation where you guys are going to increase your capacity and so we should be looking to, to develop in those areas? Is that correct, Aaron?
No, so, um, yeah, go ahead, Aaron, start.
No, so I think if, if you are aware, so Juan mentioned that we have a whole other group that kind of takes in these projects. And that's our account executives. And so they would be the ones that you'd be working with, they're external facing as well. And they would basically bring that information to system planning so that we know this is what kind of the, the large customer that wants to interconnect into the system, you know, kind of what those requirements are. And system planning would work with them and engineering to kind of understand, um, just how far along they are. And they would be the ones, but yes, we have dedicated account executives that would work with our larger customers.
Well, thank you. Yeah, that, that's it. Thanks. I, I would, I would just like to say that, um, we are well past our time, but I'd like to continue as well, as long as the ever source people can, uh, stand us. Uh, if anybody has to leave, please do. Um, Doug, you had a question?
No, just an observation and a question. Ever source has kind of set a, a, a standard of, of under ten kilowatt for, for homes, solar. Um, there's not a cap, you can handle it, so on and so forth. Anything over ten kilowatts, there are caps. I had to wait over a year to, to, to get hooked up at one point. Um, I'd just like to point out that in a home in of New England where we have air source heat pumps, a plug in electric car, on demand, electric hot water, um, you know, uh, a, a, electric stove with a, you know, induction top and so on. Um, it takes about twenty KW to run a home. So you may want to revisit expectations for what a so, uh, home solar array is going to look like. It's, it's kind of like bandwidth on broadband. Five to ten kilowatts look like a lot, you know, a decade ago. But anything under ten kilowatts is not going to run a modern home. So you may want to look at raising that to twenty kilowatts is, is anything under twenty is, is kind of the norm.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Hey, well, uh, thank you very much. Thanks for your time and, uh, and information. Uh, Mike and, and Juan, Jacob, Aaron, appreciate it. We, um, we have a couple items left on our agenda. Uh, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Uh, we still have an executive director's report. Uh, Tom, do you have anything to say?
Well, you really didn't get a written report and I don't have.
I'm hoping for a verbal one.
Yeah, well, uh, the only, uh, thing that I did want to mention is, uh, and this is really for information. I've been, uh, alerting or notifying you where we get these requests for agricultural preservation restrictions. And they want, uh, the DAR wants, uh, a waiver of the one hundred and twenty day notice requirement. And we got two of those, uh, in, in Sheffield. And I, I think this is all in the paper of a large, um, you know, a, a farmland, a couple of parcels that are going to go into the APR program. And then the other item that I did want to, um, alert you all to is that, um, the, in addition to, uh, the, the various plans that the, uh, the Healy administration has already presented, such as the Economic Development Plan, um, they're going to be, they're working on a housing plan. And coming up in the next several months, there'll be these same kind of listening sessions. I don't know if anyone went to the, uh, either the, uh, municipal modernization bill listening session that was at the BIC or the Economic Development Listening Session that was at the BIC. There'll be another one of those. So, uh, specific to housing, I would encourage you when that's, I, I don't know if it's going to be at the BIC. They haven't set the locations of these. I'm hoping we can get one in Berkshire County. But that housing plan will really start to dictate a lot of the, uh, other activities that the Healy administration will be following through over the rest of the course of their tenure. So those are the two items that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention.
Any questions for Tom? Okay, uh, we just have one more item on the agenda and, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
To go. No, thanks Doug.
How second is Pedro?
Thank you, Pedro. Um, we should, uh, take a vote. Kate?
Keith has given the okay. Thank you. Anyway, uh, Diana, are you still with us?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Thank you. Is that a yes for adjourning?
Yes, I, I'm doing adjourned.
Peter?
Yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
Keith, we got you. Leanne?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Super.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Eight forty-nine.